Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you very much for registering and coming along today to our webinar. I'd first like to start today's event by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the land from which I'm speaking to you from today. I'd also like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands from which each of our online attendees are living and working, and pay my respects to their elders past and present. I wish to also extend that same respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Island people here with us today as well. By way of introduction, my name's Richard Wilson. I'm the Business Development Manager from Datacom IT. Joining me also from Datacom IT today is Christine Chetifanti, who's Datacom IT's Marketing Manager, has been responsible for setting up today's event. So, thank you, Christine. Also, as I say, from Datacom IT is Roger Mills. Roger is Datacom IT's Digital Preservation Consultant, and facilitates our Recollect implementations in the capacity of a project manager for that. Roger will be providing part of today's demonstration, giving you an overview of the Recollect solution and the collection management. But our special guest today is Tamara Hind, who's the Museum Curator from Shell Harbour City Museum. And of course, Shell Harbour are utilizing Recollect for their Discover Shell Harbour solution, and she also will be providing an overview of that solution and how they're using it. Just by way of introduction, we have some of our existing clients joining us today, and hopefully some new prospective clients. So I just wanted to give a little bit of a brief overview of who Datacom IT are and who Recollect are, as we are two separate entities. So Datacom IT are the Australian Sales and Implementation Partner for Recollect, so we're not the developers of the solution. But Recollect itself is a standalone company, software-as-a-service company, that has developed the Recollect solution, and they're based out of New Zealand. We will have some question and answer time at the end. If anyone wanted to find out some more history on the Recollect solution, we'll be able to give you some details on that during the Q and A session. Just in relation to Q and A, so during the presentation, Roger and Tamara, if you have or do come across any questions that you wanted to raise, you'll find in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a chat box. And in that chat box, please feel free to enter any queries that come to mind as you see either or listen to either of their presentations. And what we'll do at the end is we'll circle back to those and answer those questions at the end in that Q and A situation. So I guess I'll now hand over to Roger, who'll undertake the first part of today's presentation.
Thank you very much, Richard. Share my screen. There we go. Can everyone see this screen?
We can, Roger. Thank you, yes.
Fantastic. Well, look, thanks so much, Richard. And I'd just like to say I'm coming from Gadigal country on the EORI Nation here in Sydney. Look, welcome to this webinar, Exploring the Future of Collection Management. A lofty title, but one in which I think that Recollect has a lot to contribute. In this presentation, I'm going to introduce you to some of the key functionality of the system, and how it can enable advancements in the work that collection managers and administrators do in curating and managing their collections. As Richard said, I'm the Project Manager for Recollect Implementations across Australia, and my background is in tertiary education libraries, having worked as an academic at UTS for a number of years, as well as Northern Beaches Libraries. And say hello to my ex-colleagues at Northern Beaches Libraries, I saw that some of you had registered. I should also say I work very closely with our Archives and Collections Management Specialist Jess McDonald Norman, who is a trained archivist and has a great knowledge of archival and collection data management. And Jess is really instrumental in helping our clients through the implementation process, structure their data templates, links and relationships that Recollect's linked data model is known for. And I will be demonstrating that as we go through the presentation. All right, so let's set the context and consider for a moment the evolving nature of collection management, and particularly how advancements in collection management and digital asset management capabilities. And I'm thinking here, you know, things like being able to view 3D objects, virtual exhibitions, even artificial intelligence. You know, how they're starting to redefine audience relationships with collection management of digital objects, exhibitions and heritage. So it's become, you know, it's become much more than storing and managing data and physical objects to really focusing, as Wu Atal sort of state there, on creating engaging audience experiences. So the emphasis has gone very much from object-centeredness to the visitor experience. And I think that's what Recollect has really tried to capture with the strong focus on their discovery layers, from discovering content through descriptive metadata, accessing content from any internet-connected device. And most importantly, this is the user experience, the audience engagement with tools that allow the community to enrich your collections with their knowledge. And obviously, that knowledge is grounded in local history. And we like to think of this as allowing your community to create a storehouse, if you like, of community knowledge. Just as a conceptual overview of the way that Recollect does this through the linked metadata model, it's an overview that allows, for instance, someone in an image, a person in an image photograph, let's say, can be connected through metadata to an information item about that person, which contain a biography, but also series of metadata links that will take you through to perhaps a document that that person is mentioned in, or perhaps they wrote that document. The document might reference an oral history, for instance. That oral history might have mentioned an event that was part of that document and that person's life. Obviously, that will be linked to a place for that event to have taken place with all of these forward and backward relational links through the metadata structure. And that's the really important part of Recollect that I think sets itself apart from many other systems. But if we move beyond the image here in terms of the way that Recollect provide that sort of interactive functionality, let's just jump into some live sites here. Waverley Library, Celebrating Waverley is a recent implementation we've done, and those Sydney-siders will be very much aware of the Mermaids on Benbuckla Rock at Bondi. And this information page, information item or information hub, we like to think of them, is a trove of documents and images about the sculptures of the mermaids on the rock, how the artist applied to the council to have the installation made in the first place. It was knocked back. They did it anyway. You can discover all of this information through this information item page. And the integration that Recollect has with Google Street View also then allows you to contextualise that item, that collection item, by viewing the actual location that the mermaids were once located. And this just provides that information to contextualise your collection items in a way that a lot of systems don't do as well. Another aspect that I think is a great move forward for us is something that Jess has created, which is a customisation to allow viewers to interact with images. In this case, an image from 1962 of the Argent Hotel in Mount Isa City. Mount Isa being an implementation we did recently to what it looks like in 2022. Again, that sort of geolocation, time period contextualisation to your items, which just gives that user, not only the interactivity of actually touching, moving items around on the page, but that understanding of where they've come from and where they're potentially going to as well. The user collections in Recollect is another interactive feature that allows for registered users to build up collections of items that they have favoured in the collection. So at an item view, each item has a star, which allows you to press it, and you can build up collection items, really useful for family historians, students researching particular topics. We've all been there when we've been downloading a lot of links and accidentally closed one, you can't remember what it is. Here, we can actually store items within Recollect and create new collections ourselves with those. I was talking earlier about 3D viewing. Recollect provides the ability, without any third-party software, to view objects. In this case, it's some indigenous implements that were uncovered in an archaeological dig in Newcastle. You can simply ingest these OBJ files and then view them in three dimensions. So really useful for researchers interested in the contours or shape or colours of a particular object. You know, it feels like you're actually really, really handling that object. And in fact, University of Newcastle with their Living History Site went just that one step further with a collaboration, as I understand it, with the Computer Sciences Department, developing an interface with the Oculus Rift headset and platform so that you could actually pick up those objects and view them in three dimensions from the Recollect database. A really interesting and unique way to use collection management. I had to add this one because I know that some of my colleagues at Northern Beaches are probably attending this. And in fact, Bridget from Northern Beaches presented this in one of our earlier webinars. It's an old technology, QR codes, but there was a panoramic image down on D Y Beach of the beach back in the 1920s. And then people were captivated by it, and you could simply scan it with your phone, scan the QR code with your phone. It would take you straight into the collection item, and you could learn, you know, through that linked data model, all about camping circa 1950, D Y Beach, you know, in the early 1915s, all about the Surf Lifesaving Club and the veterans of the life club. Really interesting use of an old technology, and just an example of the way that the collection managers are actually providing this level of user experience, audio experience to the system. GeoMax is another really interesting functionality that allows for the ability to layer collection items over a geographical location, as Melanie at Ipswich has done here. Incidentally, if anyone's interested in innovative digital collection management, I certainly recommend going to the Picture Ipswich site because there's some fantastic work that Melanie has been doing there. Here's an example of the little shipyard at Tassbradbrook Island. And again, you can jump into that Google Street View and have a look at what it looks like today and get that real contextual overview of the differences between the then and now and that hands-on experience of it as well, which is just so important. Of course, GeoMax can also be used as a search functionality, where you can put a search term in and actually find, it'll delimit all of the items in it just to that particular search. So that's another way that it can be used. Staying on Picture Ipswich here, in fact, Melanie and Tanya presented in the last webinar, in fact, their heritage trails. And I've been blown away by the work they've been doing with their heritage trails. In this instance, using the information item, but with the tagging functionality, where they've tagged a number of places within the streets of Ipswich. So if you're out doing this heritage walk with your mobile phone or tablet, and you come across the Simples Rectory, for instance, you can click on that link and then get all of the information that's drawn into the information item, maps and plans and artworks, and you can then take a look at that image from the 1930s. And of course, you then got your metadata on that right-hand side, which will take you to other links to learn more about that location, reverend, the place, subjects, suburbs and the like. Recollect is integrated with a Matterport software, and an example, a really good example of how this has been used is Wesley College with their Old Landscape Through New Eyes exhibition. What this allows is for you to do a virtual walkthrough of a digital exhibition that enables the user to scan a room and see the paintings, and also go up to one of those paintings, have a look at it, and then just simply click on the link, and then you get all of the information about the artist and the inspiration for the painting itself. Charles Darwin University has made a lot of their CDU art collection well worth a browse. There's some fantastic paintings in here, some great indigenous works as well. And a great way to view the artwork held by the university there. Now, talking about digital exhibitions and virtual exhibitions, Recollect have recently created an exhibition module, which we're currently viewing the back end of that module. It's really easy to set up, as you can see in the panel here. You just add your exhibition notice. It runs through a series of slides, so you can put all the text that you want there. You can design the slide with your hex codes and font types and clone those slides. There is a video demonstration of the back end here. It's only just been released at the beginning of this year. So I'd be happy to pass that on if anyone is interested in seeing that. But let's just jump into an example of it. Here we have the World's Columbian Exposition of 1893. And you can kind of go to the menu and see each of the parts of the exhibition there, or you can literally click through the exhibition slide by slide. And then if you're interested in a part of the exhibition, you can, for instance, uncover the creations from the Liberal Arts Building, and it'll take you back to your Recollect site with all of the images and items that are linked to that information page. And again, you've got your metadata on that right-hand side, which will take you into the place of Chicago, the building itself. And you've got that whole ability to uncover the stories that are embedded in this one exhibition, simply through the metadata links. Of course, Recollect doesn't only handle digital assets. It is, as I said, a unified digital asset and collection management system combined. So City of Sydney, for instance, use Recollect for a number of their records. Here, they've imported trim data from their joint building certificate applications. And so you've got all that metadata there, data quality, access and so forth. And they've also taken full advantage of the parent-child relationships here. So you can skip through the different certificates that are related to this one BA application. Here's an example from Moreton Bay Regional Libraries, although I think they've had a name change recently. They've got quite a substantial microform collection. Here, you've got an information item with all of the metadata there on that right-hand side this time, and importantly, the storage location. And so this really allows you that ability at a granular level to look at where those items stay. So it's more about the venue, how to get there, for instance, but also down to the individual cabinet level and shelf level within the cabinets. So excellent features for purely collection management capacities. And of course, with the linked metadata, you can have digital assets linked to collection physical items. And that's quite a unique thing in itself. The South Library of South, State Library of South Australia have taken advantage with their physical objects of the circular linking capability, where you can link Recollect to a library management system. So here, you might have started in the library management system and think, oh, that's interesting. I'm really interested in clockwork aeroplanes, but there's no picture here. So let's have a look at the digital collections, and it'll take you straight back to Recollect to see that collection item. And again, you've got that metadata on the right-hand side. If Recollect is known for anything, it is its contemporary vision for community contributions and engagement. And this includes being able to add stories to individual items. So for instance, you can add a recollection here. I'll have to log in to do this. You'll have seen I've already left one earlier on. Let me just go back to that. Simple as just adding a story there. It might be that your grandfather is in this picture, and you just wanted to let that be known. Perhaps the administrators, when they moderate this contribution, may deem it not useful information. But if you go back to the image tags themselves, users, you can set Recollect so that the users can tag an image that can be then moderated by administrators. And where an image is tagged with, say, a person in this instance, with an information item type already about them in the system, it'll immediately link to that person's information page with their biography and all of the assets drawn into this information item about them. In this case, in Ed Wilson's time at the school as principal, so that you can, again, discover the stories about her time at the school through that. Suggesting edits is another good way to engage your community. And going back to Picture Ipswich here, with this fascinating elocution class, you can simply allow your community members to add geo tags to particular items. It might be a photograph of a location, for instance. They can add some comments there. It could be that this item was incorrectly dated or something like that, and they can suggest a change to that date. You're also able to provide the ability for people to upload content. Again, all of this is moderated, so you could upload photographs, for instance, allowing registered users to add a geo tag to it, a descriptive note and confirming that they're the copyright owner, which just to a degree absolves your responsibility for the copyright on it, although I advise you to follow that up just a little bit more closely, just to ensure that copyright is free to use. But there's an example of allowing community contributions. Now, the oral histories, and I know Tamara might talk to this about her, their oral histories on the podcasts. Here's an example of the way that Recollect can display oral histories in an information item like this. But what I want to show you here is the ability to caption tag. So it allows registered users, if you wish, again, this is all moderated by administrators. You can select your time point here, and you can add that caption that you wish to be seen on that right-hand side. Mostly, this is just kept to administrators to do this. But for instance, if you wanted to hear Audrey talk about her time watching television in Upper Hut, you could just jump straight through to that area, and you'll hear her talking there. They've also included as attachments transcripts of the oral histories, another really useful component to Recollect, being able to add that different type of data so that particularly for accessibility, you'd be able to read the transcript from there. Now, we might just jump under the hood in the time that we've got left. What we're looking at here is a Recollect item template. And an item template, as you can see here, is how you map out the data that falls on that right-hand side of an item view. So you've got your item number, series document, item number, series document and so forth. And this is configured during the implementation stage, and this is where Jess will work with you very closely to help you export the data from a previous system, or instruct you in terms of how you can transform your data into a Recollect-ready state. This is completely empty when you get your site instance, and we can simply just add these fields as a group and then as a new field, as simply as that. And if you want to change those around, that's really easy as well. So if you decide after you've added all of the fields, actually, you want the item number to be underneath the series number, it's as simple as that, and you can just save and exit. On this left-hand side, you've got your admin panel, you've got your site settings, your item templates, your item types, page editor, which is where you configure the widgets on the homepage, content for the widgets on the homepage, managing content, you can create individual items, batch uploading smaller, you know, items of 20 to 30 items that share similar metadata, to ingests of 2,000 to 5,000 at a time, rolling back, creating reports, user admin, where you can provide access control lists, so you provide access to content that others may not be able to view or edit, for instance. This is where you review all of your contributions. And so what that looks like from an admin panel perspective, you know, if there was some contributions or some tags to view, they'd all come up in that window there. I'm actually showing you our sandbox site, so there won't be any there. It's not open to the public to view. As part of any, I'd say, advanced collection management system is the ability to be able to create workflow tasks for activities that are regularly undertaken. This is really for much larger organisations, such as the City of Sydney, who make good use of this. It's a module that assists with creating data entry forms that can be created for editors or administrators for regular activities, such as appraisals or dispositions, editing of collection items. Tasks can be made mandatory through these forms, and as you can see, someone who has a task assigned to them can then go into the system, find out what task is assigned, and then do the task. And then the administrator can sign those tasks off at the end. Really useful tool. So look, just in summary of the presentation I've given to you today, you know, Recollect, as I said before, is a digital asset collection management system, is one platform with a customised discovery widget layout, where we work with you with your theming and branding and logos and hex codes and so forth to stylise your homepage. It's a software-as-a-service hosted by AWS here, so all your data is kept onshore. You have unlimited storage capacity with unlimited users as well. And I was just talking about that access control there, so you've got role-based users with tiered access privileges too, fully integrated with Trove. And I noticed that with some Trove people who are going to be jumping onto this presentation as well. So hello and thank you for all the work you do, as well as the OAIPMH integration as well for metadata harvesting. So you can allow other organisations to harvest the metadata that you have within Recollect. And look, this is all I've got for you, but what I like to say is that if anything here has struck a chord with you today and you're thinking about a collection management system or digital asset management system, we do offer free personalised demonstrations. We do like to talk to you about your collections first. But do contact either Richard or myself, and we'd be happy to line that up. Now, look, I know Tamara Hind has been waiting very patiently in the wings. Thank you, Tamara. So I'm going to hand it over to you, and we can learn all about Discover Shell Harbour. So thank you very much, Tamara.
Thank you, Roger. I'm just going to try and share my screen. Hopefully that will work. Can everybody see that?
Indeed. All good. Thank you.
Well, firstly, thank you very much for having me, and thank you for that introduction. My name's Tamara Hind. I'm the curator of Shell Harbour City Museum here at Shell Harbour City Council. And I just wanted to talk to you today about our collections and how we've approached their future management and their sustainability. So Shell Harbour City Museum is a local history museum, but we don't operate really as a traditional museum. I mean, we also hold collections other than museum objects. Because we are a council museum, we also hold the Council Archives Collection, the Tongara Heritage Society Archives, which is our local heritage society. The Local Studies Collection is also held in our Heritage Centre, which is attached to the museum. So we sort of operate more like a local studies section as well as a museum. So for that reason, you know, we don't only undertake traditional museum work, like collections management and exhibition and exhibition development programme development, conservation, volunteer management. But we also undertake a lot of research services, and they're both for external customers and in-house for council. So we do a lot of research for our asset section at council, for buildings, for DA's, environments, all sorts of things all the time. And we do that because we are the holders of the archives. So we're the ones that are able to undertake the research. So before we had this database, I was really the only council staff member that knew the local history, that had the local history knowledge. So I know all the significant links between places, people and objects. I know when places were built. I know who built them. I know who lived there. I know who they were related to. But nobody else in council really did. All of our collections also were stored in several different locations. So museum objects were stored in the museum store, but we also had heritage society files, which were in the heritage room. We had photos, which were on our internal server. We had stuff all over the place. And it just wasn't a sustainable model for collection and information management to have one person in council that had all the knowledge, and also one person in council who knew where everything was. So that was a thought that used to, you know, wake me up in a cold sweat in the middle of the night. But luckily for us, our fabulous IT department were really supportive of us getting a new database. And we're really excited to have a cloud-based system because, quite frankly, it meant they didn't have to worry about it. But also, it's something to take us into the future, you know, something to share all of our collections and to make finding the history of Shell Harbour easier, not only for external customers, but also for council staff. and to make finding the history of Shaw Harbour easier, not only for external customers, but also for council staff. So we wanted a platform that would serve as like a one stop heritage shop that was open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It was important for us not only to digitise and make the collection items that we hold online, but to also have a platform that enabled us to link all of these collection items together. The links that only I knew and link all the items together based on the history and relevance to particularly the people and places significant in our city. We wanted a platform that really made it easier for our customers to find information without necessarily having to search for it and without having to specifically know what they were looking for. So with these things in mind, we set about coming up with a series of main collections that we thought would be user friendly for our customers. So we came up with, at first when we launched it, we had these 10 collections. So a First Nations collection was really important for us to establish and I'll come back to that later. We separated our maps and plans, we had photos, documents, these are all our museum objects. We also had the council archives, which are all the rate books, valuation books, building registers. We had a selection of digital stories that we wanted to promote. But we also thought that in order to make this information, you know, relevant, we really needed to create biographies on the families and the people and the places that were significant in Shaw Harbour, so that we could create all of these links and make searching much easier for our customers. This was a huge undertaking because we didn't really have a functioning database prior to this. So our metadata was slim, slim to none. So lucky for us, the development of this database coincided precisely with the COVID lockdowns, which meant that we were close to the public for the better part of two years, which meant that I had extra assistance from all the library staff who helped me scan all my maps, scan all our photos at high res. We had one of the library assistants who had worked as a photographer before, taking beautiful photos of all of the objects in our collection. And I set about working on all the metadata, so developing the bios for the places, people and families. So we've since added, since, since launch, we have added another five collections here down the bottom, just to make it a bit easier for people to use. So we've added a link to our podcasts. These two are feature collections that we just use to highlight significant events in the city or places or people. This is the Heritage Society Archives and we've recently just added the jigsaw puzzle component of Recollect too. I think we've got about 12 puzzles up there. I just wanted to show you, I'll come back to First Nations in a little bit, but I just wanted to show you some of the examples of how we've tried to create as many links on our site as possible. So this is a bio for the Hamley family, they were farming family in Dunmore. And what we've done is, these are all your connections down the side, but we've also created external links and these are all two articles that we found on Trove. So obituaries about the family, you know, information about a wedding, funeral notices, just things that are going to help people who are searching for information on the Hamley family to easily find information. And then we've also added links to all of the photographs in our database that relate to the family, all of the other families in Shaw Harbour that are immediately connected.
Are you thinking the same thing as the site, sorry Tamara?
Sorry Tamara, I was just going to interrupt you. I, on my screen, I think it might be the same for everyone else. We can't see those links that you're talking about at the moment. We can just see your homepage there.
Oh, really? Can you see my moving homepage now?
Yes, we can see that moving, but it's not coming.
Sorry, I'm going to have to do a, I'm going to have to do it this way, sorry. Do apologise. I thought I could save time.
Give everyone a good demonstration.
Okay, so here is the, you can see that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So this is our, our Hamley bio about the family, this is a Hamley bio. We've got all the connections down the side. So we've, as I was saying before, we've, we've made an external link to all the Trove articles that we could find. And, and it's really useful having this in the template because when I'm doing other research on Trove for something completely unrelated, as often is the case, you'll find an article that's linked to something in your database. So it's simply a matter of copying that link and pasting it in the, in the bio for whatever you've, family you've created. It's really useful. So we've created links to all of the photographs in the collection that relate to the Hamley family, including photos of the family themselves and the farms. We have created links to all the objects in the collection that relate to the Hamley family. Now, these ones unfortunately have not got photos yet. I've got a photographer coming in next week to take photos of those items because they're newly donated. We've got connections to all the significant families in Shaw Harbour that immediately, immediately relate to the Hamley family.
Showing, showing that information item for the Hamley family? We're still just, are you actually showing the, the information item for Hamley family? Because we're just seeing the, the first item view.
You can't see me scrolling?
No.
That's a shame.
It might be that you're sharing only, not your whole screen, maybe only sharing part, maybe.
Oh, hang on, let me try this.
There you go.
Now we can see it.
Is that on?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So sorry, here we go again. I'm going to go quickly through this. Here are the links to the Trove articles, here are the links to the photographs. Can you see all that?
Yes.
Yep, yep.
Links to objects that I've not got photos for yet because I only donated a couple of weeks ago. Links to families that are related to the Hamley family, maps and plans that show the locations of their houses or farms. And a link to place, which was Glenworth was their farm. So it just means that if someone does a search for Hamley, they might know, they might not know that they farmed at Nancyville and they not, might not know that they farmed at Glenworth. But if we provide those links and bios to those places, our customers will be able to easily find that information. So I'm just going to try and share this one now. Can you see that screen? So this is an individual, this is a people bio. This is Henrietta Bush who built the Ocean Beach Hotel. And same case, we scroll down, we've got links to all the photos of the hotel, all of the objects in the museum collection which, which relate to Henrietta Bush, all the Ocean Beach Hotel, links to places, links to, we've actually developed a jigsaw of the Ocean Beach Hotel, an online jigsaw, links to documents, that was for hotel licensee document, links to families that relate to the Bush family. We've actually developed a collection around that because we've got so many items in the Cullen collection. Just to try and make it as easy for our customers to find information as possible. Here is one on Cloverhill, so this is a place. We've done a biography of this farm and linked again to all the photographs relating to the people and the farm who lived there, people who lived there. All the objects in the collection that relate to Cloverhill, including some lovely little christening dresses. People who farmed at Cloverhill, we've got a short digital story that relates to Ben Turner who farmed there. Links to families who farmed there, again and again. You could go on and on and create as many links as possible. And we certainly haven't exhausted all of the links. There's certainly more we could do, but you know, it's, it's very easy to add them as you think of them. So we just want to add as much information as possible so that our customers can search for things easily, both internal and external. And I would like to say that, you know, a lot of people in the beginning had hesitations about us digitising so much content and putting so much of our information online because they thought that people wouldn't necessarily need to come into the museum anymore or need to use our service. If it's all online, what are people going to use you for? But can I just say, we have found that that has been the complete opposite. I haven't, we've never had more information requests than we're getting at the moment. And I would also say that having so much of our city's history and our cultural collections online has, it's really increased our opportunity and capacity for acquiring collections. And I'll just, I'll take you now to this screen. This is a postcard that we received from a man who lives in Nova Scotia. So he found a series of postcards of Benjamin Horace Turner, who was a Shaw Harbour resident, but originally was born in London and he was a parachute stunt jumper. And he came over here and made parachutes for the Second World War. Then he designed scamp swimsuits in the 1950s. He lived at Cloverhill. Anyway, this man in Nova Scotia, his mother had just passed away and he was going through all of her documents. And he found all of these photos of this man and thought, my goodness, who is this? And he did a quick Google search, came across our site where we had a bio on Ben Turner. And he contacted us through Recollect. And in the end, he donated all of these fantastic postcards of Ben Turner. Photos, we hadn't seen a photo of him in his youth before. We'd had plenty of photos of him later in life when he lived in Shaw Harbour, but none of him in his little parachute gear there. And he's actually signed the postcards as well. So, you know, these are things that if we didn't have this information online about this gentleman, these things would never have been donated because the man in Nova Scotia would never have known who he was and never have known where, where to post these items to. So, and you know, we've got, there's, there's a hundred different examples of that. It's also increased our capacity to, to share our collections to other organisations. Like we've been contacted from, by Australia Post, who have wanted to use two of the items on our database as part of the design of new postage stamps. So, you know, without getting all your content online, these things just wouldn't be possible. So we've actually found the opposite. It's been a very positive experience for us. So the last thing I wanted to talk to you about is, I'll just have to show you, sorry, an example of the photos. So these are the photos that, that Will took, who was one of our library assistants, just these fantastic photos. And this is why we're contacted by people like the, you know, the Australian War Memorial have asked us for images, Australia Post have asked us for images. Like I think if you take quality photos of your items, they're, they're just more impressive to other people and, you know, they really show off your collections. So I will just go back to our, I will just get back to our First Nations collections because I know Roger was keen for me to speak about how that evolved. So we really wanted to create a First Nations collection. And we're really lucky here at Shaw Harbour City Council in that we have an Aboriginal community liaison group, a committee who is actually the oldest committee in New South Wales and the longest serving committee in New South Wales, continuously serving. So they're a really great progressive bunch of people who are proud of their Dharawal heritage and really want to promote it to the community. They're really proud of their cultural heritage and so they should be. So in order for us to do that, we at Shaw Harbour City Museum hold the collection. So we just consider ourselves as the custodians of the collection. But really the AAC, Aboriginal Working Party, is what we call them. They're really the managers of the collection. So everything that we do in terms of Dharawal cultural heritage has to go through our AAC. So what I did was I set up the collection as it would look if it went live to members of the public. So, and then I, I just took them through every stage of the collection. So I attended one of their meetings, I talked to them for about half an hour, I showed them this, exactly what I'm showing you now. I took them through links to all the documents that we were going to link to. So I didn't just want objects in the First Nations collection and I didn't just want to feature, you know, maybe half a dozen objects. I, I, I didn't want it to feel like a thin collection because our collection is quite significant. I wanted to add documents, I wanted to add bios on families, I wanted to add a bio on the AAC committee itself. And I wanted to take really good photos of the collection items as well. So we came up with a collection of like significant documents that relate to cultural salvage sites, archaeological stuff, Dharawal seasons, local history publications that are available. We linked again to lots of the photographs. These photographs that are blank are the ones that are not available for viewing to the public. You can only see that because I'm logged in at the moment. Then we've got links to the objects in our collection. So these little shoes, I'll show you in a minute. Really great photos, links to maps and plans that show locations of original camps and reserves, links to artwork that have been done by Dharawal members of the community, links to bios on individuals, links to significant events, particularly council events that are undertaken throughout the year. We've got a short video on knowledge of country that was developed by two local ladies through council, links to families, links to places of significance, localities, specific collections, organisations. That's our Aboriginal Advisory Committee, a bio on them, links to industries, language. This, this collection will grow in the future. And in fact, I've got a whole series of artefacts that I want to add to this collection. But that will require me to go back to the AAC and, and present to them. I'll just show you these little shoes, these are beautiful little shoes. They're actually made out of playing cards you can see in there and shells, little booties made by Arnie Marie Stewart. These are part of the collection and the photographs that Will took were just fantastic. So if I zoom in, you can see right detail all the little shelves. Like I think quality images just, just really help. So I presented all this information to the AAC and I drafted descriptions, my descriptions of what I thought should go with the objects. They read through it all, they looked at it all and they were, I think they were just quite impressed, particularly with the photos. And at the end of it, like they're just such a good bunch. They, they were just really happy for me to put as much First Nations content as possible on Discover Shaw Harbour for when we launch. So, you know, that's really nice. I think it's, it's really nice that they trust me to do that. And I think that's, you know, trust is built over many years. And I think council has actually built a really good relationship with our AAC and our local Aboriginal liaison group. And, you know, they, they trust that we're going to do the right things by their collections. And I trust them, if they say, no Tamara, you better not show that to the public, then I go, okay, we won't show that. And that's fine, that's no problem at all. But we hope that this collection will continue to grow. You know, I've got probably another 20 items that I want to add and I'm hoping to do that this year. Whether, whether or not that happens this year is another thing, but we hope so. So it's just, yeah, it's important for us that our customers are able to use the site with as much efficiency as possible. And it's helped me because when I get information requests now, for the most part, I can direct them to the site. That helps people largely, especially internally. But we've just had great feedback from the community as well. And especially local journalists who are looking for stories on local history. They just give positive feedback all the time and say, it's fantastic, there's so much information. feedback all the time and say, it's fantastic, there's so much information on the history of your city, uh, and, you know, we are adding to it all the time, it will be a never ending job, but um, yeah, we think we've made a good start with it anyway, and, and this platform, Recollect, just really sort of suited all of our needs for the different types of collections that we've had, uh, putting them all together on one platform. So our experience has been very successful.
Thank you so much, Tamara, that's.
Great.
That's fantastic, thank you so much. I've just got a, um, I know there's a couple of questions already, and we'll come to the questions in the chat shortly, but just on that um First Nations collections you've got, um, wondering whether you could speak briefly to your experience of working with the local First Nations community in terms of um developing metadata, did they, did they help you create that metadata?
Well, I'm lucky, I'm, I'm lucky, I'm in a, I'm in a, I'm in a pretty good position in that they, they have a lot of trust in me, which is, you know, very, it's quite humbling, I've, I've worked at council for 20 years, so I've got a, a pretty good relationship with me, and they, they can speak to me very frankly, and um, I, I, I just thought, if I dressed it, I mean, my, my background's in ar- archaeology, I've got an archaeology degree, so technically I know what I'm talking about. Um, so I thought it's much easier to go to the AAC with a draft blurb for those cultural heritage items in particular, and the bios, if I go and draft blurbs, show them to the AAC, they review them, there was a couple of things they wanted me to change, a couple of my words they wanted me to change, no problem. Um, a couple of items, a couple of the items they preferred that I uh didn't show because there was a couple of committee members that weren't in agreement, you know, Uncle Richard said, yeah, that's fine, another committee member wasn't so sure, so we just said, that's okay, we'll leave that one for now, we can come back to it later, yeah.
Yeah, fantastic. One of the other things that I noticed about your site as well, uh, is your Veterans Stories podcasts, I thought that was interesting, um, moving track a, a little bit away from what we've just been talking about, but um, how did that come about? I noticed that you uh got some funding from New South Wales Government.
Yeah, we got Veterans New South Wales funding for that project, and we wanted to do contemporary veterans' stories. So we've got loads of information on veterans from the past, World War One, World War Two, we wanted to do some more contemporary stories because we were really lacking in those. So I contacted both, we've got two R S L sub branches in our city, Warilla and Albin Park, and I contacted both of those um sub branches who's, who I know really well, over, you know, over 20 years, you get to know people. So they were really great, and they put me in touch with, um, they had a few of their members in mind, the younger members, and they put me in touch with several of them. And then, you know, we got funding to do three podcasts uh as a, as a first launch, and then we'll, we'll look to doing more in the future. But they put us in touch with some really fantastic guy like um Lachlan Stephens was a, he was an Afghan veteran, and his job was to sweep for mines before the, before the, the flight, you know, he, he was out there in France sweeping for mines before the platoon came in, like, what a job. Um, and now, it's really interesting, actually, those, the three veterans that we interviewed for the podcast all came back and all got into doing things around men's mental health, like that was really important for them because of their experiences, they just saw the need to help men in particular with mental health. So they've all gone on just to do fantastic things in the community, like Lachlan owns um His Boy Elroy, which is a local cafe now, and they've set up uh Barstool Brothers, which is like a meet and greet for men who might need some, you know, assistance or just to chat with other guys, and um, yeah, it was really interesting talking to them. So we actually, we actually, with the grant funding, um, employed a local podcast maker, filmmaker to undertake the interviews for us.
Well, thank you so much, that's really informative, um, and very topical, obviously today, uh, in these, these times as well with men's mental health. Um, yeah, we might just move over to some of the questions that we've got in the chat, um, David's, oh, no, sorry.
That's right, go ahead, go ahead.
Regent and Prade, um, David's talking about or asking, will the recording of the event be circulated to participants after the session? Uh, yes, David, uh, it will be, so um Christine will be sending out uh links to the, to the recording uh for everyone who registered, um, but if you'd like a, a recording and you know someone didn't register, please do get in contact with us, and we've had, we have to share that uh recording today with you. Uh, the second question there from Melanie Swallow, uh, I see that Recollect is billed as a CMS, uh, what if any preservation functions, does it include beyond digital records saved in the cloud? Or does it interface with a digital preservation system? Like, you've asked the right person there, Melanie. Um, yes, Recollect actually has a digital preservation module, uh, which is used to um look at obsolescence of files, but also to do regular fixing checks. Uh, so essentially it uh will scan all of your files, first of all, with a virus checker, but then it checks, then checks sums all the files either as you ingest or retrospectively if you add it later on, uh, and it'll perform a fixing check every, every 90 days. So yes, Recollect uh does have a digital preservation function for all of the digital assets and data. Uh, but you're right, it is also a collection management system where you can, as I, as I was showing you earlier on, um, actually manage physical collection items in shelves, boxes and units. I don't know if anyone else has got any other questions?
Yeah, nobody else has launched any other questions, but um if you do have something especially um for Tamara, it'd be great to post that now, we can certainly take any other questions um about Recollect further offline, but if you do have queries for Tamara and how um she's using Recollect or any other queries in relation to the museum, it'd be a great time to uh to lodge those. We are coming up close to um, close to the hour, so it is, is good timing, um, so please do add anything that you've got in. Um, just while we're waiting for any other questions that come in, thank you very much, Tamara, for joining today's webinar.
Fantastic.
It was the first time I'd heard the story about Benjamin Turner out there, and I think that uh makes an amazing case study, obviously, for the use and promoting of um your collections online and, and how that's um eventuated you in securing those additional.
Yeah.
So the collection, um, fantastic, uh, fantastic case study on what's, what's transpired. Really, really good.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Um, so I don't think we've got anyone else that's asking any questions, and we are just about to tick over onto the hour, so um, again, thank you very much, it was great to have you and.
Thanks for having me.
Very engaging presentation, and of course, thank you to Roger also for the introduction um from Recollect. And again, as Roger had mentioned, if anyone is interested in us providing you with a, a tailored demonstration based on your collection, do get in touch. Um, we, uh, there's no obligation, we, we're really keen to be able to showcase Recollect to as many people as possible, so we're more than happy to um, um, to provide a demonstration for you uh at, at any time. All right, well, thank you all very much, and we hope to speak to you again sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.